...call this Battleground School Board meeting to order and ask Mr. Mike Kessler to meet some...
Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, united, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Mike, we need to know more about you. Can you tell us, Mike Kessler?
Oh, okay. Guess I got to come to these meetings more often. My name's Mike Kessler. I'm starting my third year with Battleground Public Schools as the security supervisor. A lot of good things have happened the last three years. We're continuing to build on what we've already started. We're here tonight to present our revision for our emergency operation plan, which we're really excited about. The biggest thing that I've always learned in my career, 20, 25-plus years with Washington State Patrol, is you can't have enough training and drills. You've got to continue to do those things. Believe in what you're doing and practice makes permanent. And that's always what's been instilled in me, you know, throughout those years. So, we continue to get better at our drills and I make myself available to the staffs at the schools to better prepare their safety and security procedures and try to be present at as many drills as I can just to make sure that we talk about and debrief afterwards and lessons learned are the most important things to get out there. So, anyway, it's me.
In case you didn't all see it, there was a great article in the Columbian in Battleground Communications. Can you tell us about that article?
I'm blessed to have three beautiful sons. The two younger ones decided to take the path that I did with Washington State Patrol. I'm very proud of them. Both of recent, you know, after starting in the little two-lane roadways out and about the state of Washington, have made it back to the Vancouver-Clark County area. And it's kind of unheard of, but they're actually working in the same detachment together. And, you know, all the years of you all that have kids and know how siblings could be growing up, it's actually kind of neat to see them actually working in a career together. And they're always, for some reason, they still call me and bounce things off of me. And I've been gone nine years now at the Patrol, but I rode with them a couple times. And I'm just proud of them. They're doing a good job and, you know, it's... And my oldest son, he's, in public forum as well, he's in the health business. He sells gym memberships. So, if anybody wants a membership, he works down at the old gym at the mall. Anyway, I'm proud of all three of them and their careers they chose. And I've been blessed here in the last two years. I went from zero to four grandchildren. So, it's nice.
Understand, your oldest son, or one of your sons is wearing your badge?
Yeah. My middle boy, that's been on the Patrol the longest, had the opportunity to get my badge number. The State Patrol's kind of like the Battleground Public Schools. We're a big family. And they really believe in the family tradition. The unfortunate thing is that my badge number was assigned to another trooper a couple classes before my son's. And took a little wrench in there with a little help from an assistant chief that I'm still good friends with. But we were able to get the badge number and keep it in the family for another 25 years, hopefully. Thank you.
Ms. Paxton, will you take the call for us?
Yes. Monty Anderson, President, Director of District One.
Here.
Mavis Nichols, Vice President, Director of District Four.
Here.
Ken Ruth, Director of District Two.
Present.
Jim Peguero, Director of District Three.
Present.
Stephanie McClintock, Director of District Five.
Present.
Thank you. Little forum.
Thank you, Ms. Paxton. Next item would be to attend approval.
How does approval of the agenda?
A motion to approve the agenda. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Then the next item on the agenda is our ASB reports. One more nice, blessed reading.
So, what's been happening at Perry and Sports is our girls' bowling team has been doing really good. They're 11-1 right now. So, and I asked one of the girls, I was like, "So, how's your season going?" She's like, "Well, I hope you do this. That is not going to happen again." Boys' basketball, we're ranked seventh in state right now in league. We've won all our games. We're 9-1. And then girls' basketball, we're undefeated in Washington and second in state ranking. So, we normally have winter wishes before winter break, but this year due to snow days, we're unable to do that. But we still want to have winter wishes because we're the most, like, favorite thing that is today by all students. So, we're making a compromise to do it during finals week. So, like, students are stressed out, but then they're like, "Hey, it's cool." It's a winter wish granted.
We have our Martin Luther King Assembly happening on Monday. So, hopefully we'll get snowed out. It's already half day. And we'll let you know how it goes next time. So, stay tuned. And we also, not much has been happening. So, you know, we also got new die cuts. We make little shapes out of them and we put it on the school. And that's how we recognize students. We put their names on it. And we haven't gotten new ones since 1994. So, that's what we knew. And we actually brought some here to show you.
Do you want to see them? They're kind of like holiday things, I guess, but... Got a pretty cute...
Oh, we've got that too.
Maybe one important question for you.
Oh, do you?
I wonder if they knew.
What do you do with these die cuts? Oh, so, for example, we have like a birthday board. And for every single one, we'll put each of the students' names on the birthday board. They can go and take their date, is what we normally say. But now, we have more die cuts. So, you can say, "Take your ring here." Or "Take your hat." But it's just recognition for the students. Or like, sometimes we'll use them as decorations.
Has it been picked yet for the makeup game for Battleground, for Curiosity Battleground game?
It's going to be Saturday. The fact that I cancelled, so I don't know if they're buying it. I just know until the end of the season. Yeah, so they're waiting for it.
So, reschedule that, reschedule. Schedule it, guys.
Sometime in July, maybe.
Thank you, Graham.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is our drama trip update.
So, some of our wonderful drama students are here tonight to say hi and support. We just wanted to take a chance to let you know what's happening with the trip to Edinburgh, to the Festival Fringe next August. Last time we talked to you, you guys have given us approval to go forward with this, which we really appreciate. As we headed toward the winter break, we had to have a pretty somber meeting because our fundraising was not going as well as we had hoped. We were struggling a little bit and I basically had to tell the kids, unless we can have some Christmas miracles and raise about $40,000 between now and January 4th, we may have to get it canceled. Only because, once you hit January 8th, the cancellation cost for each participant would go up. And we didn't want to spend more to not go than we would have had to almost go. So, that being said, I come to you tonight with some great news. We received actual Christmas miracles. On Christmas morning, I was talking to my dad and we were FaceTiming back and forth. He was with his grandkids and I was with him. He said, "So, how's the fundraising going?" And I said, "Well, it's a little rough. We're struggling right now, but, you know, we may have to cancel, but we're really bummed that we got chosen and all this kind of stuff." Three hours later, he called me back and said, "So, on a whim, I sent an email to an old high school classmate of mine, who was also, my dad and he are both also Oxford graduates. And he said, 'And I hadn't expected to hear back from you.'" But he emailed me back right away, said, "This is such a great opportunity. Can you just give us one of the awesome things your son is doing? Would $20,000 be helpful?" And I said, "Yes." Being the ever-prevalent mind of throwing, "But what about?" I said, "Yeah, $20,000 would be great. If he could do $30,000, we would be guaranteed we could take at least the minimum number of students. We would be able to take at least 10, including two chaperones, and he could go. We would guarantee that." I said, "Okay." Well, let me get back in touch with him. He said, "This friend of mine, $20,000 or $30,000, he can, instead of Christmas, between $50,000 and $100,000 to us." I guess he was left a lot of money by his parents. He's also a noted theater director, and so it's a very quality theater. An hour later, he called back, my dad called back and said, "$30,000 is on its way." And that was on Christmas Day. Then I contacted another group of folks who had said they would donate $10,000 to us. And they said, "How's the fundraising going?" And I said, "Well, but we could use a little more." And they said, "Well, instead of the usual money that we give at the end of the year for charitable contributions to arts organizations that we usually support, we'll give you an extra $7,000." And then I had a meeting with another person who said, "I would like to donate enough to pretty much get at least three of your students up to the full amount that they would need to." So, on December 30th, Cindy Brooks agreed to meet me at the ASB office so that we could put in the deposits for this tax year. And on December 30th, we deposited $59,633.37. So, and then with the extra money that some of the kids were able to raise over the break, since December 30th, including the deposit on December 30th, in five days, we were able to deposit a total of $66,000. What that means is that we're going. And we are now, we've got 18 people who are registered participants. Right now, we have a guarantee, we have already raised enough money to guarantee that 13 of those 18 will go. We only need, at this point, between now and April, to raise under $18,000, which I know we can do. And so, it truly is an amazing time at Battleground School District, especially with the arts. We're finding people that are coming out of the community now saying, "Now that we know you're going, we'll donate." And we know our money is going to a good cause. So, that's the exciting news. We will be representing Battleground Washington on an international stage in August in Edinburgh.
That's awesome.
Thank you. So, yeah. And the kids that are involved have been doing so much work. I can't do this without them. This doesn't exist without these incredible students. They put their heart and soul into this. And so, we thank you for your belief in us and your approval of this trip. And we know that we will make Christmas be proud and continue to do so. But it's just such an exciting time. It's such an immensely wonderful thing to be able to come back and have to meet them with these kids on the 4th of January and say, "Oh, by the way, we're going." And I didn't tell any of them about this stuff until we got back. I wanted to do a face-to-face. So, I was sitting on it for like five days. So, anyway, that is our update.
You'll be doing some performances here, won't you?
Yes. So, yeah, this is, again, it was, there were over 3,500 schools that were nominated and only 40 were chosen. And we were one of the 40. And those groups go over to and perform at the Festival Fringe, which is the largest performing arts festival in the world. We'll perform four times. We will go and see all the other high schools that are performing there and their performances and support them. The kids will get guided tours of Edinburgh and St. Andrews. They'll get to go and see a show. They'll go on the West End to London and spend two days in London to get a part trip. So, it's just, it's going to be such an immense, incredible education for them. So...
Cash, are there more coming from Washington?
Not that I know of. It's a really kind of bizarre situation. Last year, there was a group of Parkros over in Portland that went. And randomly, without us even knowing it, the show that we're taking, they had taken last year. Same show, 25 minutes away. So, it's pretty fun, pretty exciting. So, I'm picking the brain of the director from their school and saying, "So, what did you guys do? How did it work? What did you find was challenging? What did you find was great? Any hints you can give us to make our experience even better?" So, yeah. So, I do want to know if there are any other questions.
So, we can expect an update in September.
Yeah. And we'll be posting stuff on our Battleground Public Facebook page while we're there. Now with Facebook Live, who knows, we may put some Facebook Live stuff up there. But, yeah, it's, we will have, we'll come in with a slideshow or something for you guys.
How long are each of your performances?
How long? So, the way it's set up there is that your performance has to be done fully. Performance itself will be in 90 minutes. Because you've got 15 minutes to set up, 15 minutes to tear down, because it's on this massive clockwork schedule. Because they have so many performances coming out of these different venues that you can't run long. Because people will go to the festival and buy tickets for, you know, six, seven shows in a day. And so, they're expecting this show will be done at this time, this show starts at this time. And it's, when I was there, it was incredible. Like, there's no, like, when you go to a show here, doors open half an hour before. You can go in, relax. There, it's, doors open five minutes before you go in, sit down, wait, stand, here's the show. Shows always strike the second hour. So, it's, it's really quick.
Maybe your kids, the rest of the board, you throw rocks at everybody. Maybe you could perform a scene as you for us, with a set of your own boards.
Probably, yeah. Well, and the other thing is, this is the show that we're going to be doing. This is the show that we're working on right now. So, the show that goes up February 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 9th, 11th over at the high school will be the show that we're taking in Scottsdale. So, come and see it if you want to. We'll probably also do a couple of benefit performances. We won't charge anybody just for loyalty reasons in sort of mid to late July, just so that we have a chance to perform it again before we go. And I hate to cut and run, but I've got a wife who's sick and, or kids who are sick. My wife has to get to another event, so... Thank you guys so much.
Item on the agenda is our Financial Operations Report. Please.
Hi there. First of all, Washington State Auditor's Office has wrapped up their audit. They are asking for an exit conference date. I mentioned to the Audit Committee members, which is Mavis and Jim, that possibly we could look at, seeing about setting up the exit conference Wednesday, Wednesday, the 23rd, I believe it is. Is that right? Wednesday, the 18th. Whenever...
Whenever we need to...
Right. Setting it up so that while Mavis is already there for the, pre-planning for the board meeting, maybe have Jim come in and so Mavis and Jim can meet the auditors for the exit conference. Preliminary conversations with them indicates no issues at this point. So, I'm pretty confident that we've done well. Looking at enrollment, the December enrollment report is included in your packet. The total FTE for basic ed and enrollment was 12,648 FTE. So, we're seeing, we saw an increase of about 24 FTE from November to December. So, that is also good news. In the operations side of things, we had presented to the board several months ago, surplusing the house near Glenwood Heights Elementary. That house was surplused and advertised and did not sell. So, we are looking towards scheduling a practice burn with fire department in upcoming months. To take care of that, we're worried about liability if the house continues to sit there and also looking towards future construction, when upon this task. We will be moving forward after discussing, looking at increasing capacity at Warren with modulars. So, we are looking towards a contract for engineering services and to start permitting for moving the four duplexes from Yakal and bringing a contract to the board in the very near future for a tenplex modular to Yakal to get that slated and get in line with the construction for a modular. There has also been a conversation with Connect Battleground and Curtis Miller with the services that he, his organization is providing to the school district, looking at possibly leasing part of Louisville B, which is the building right here, to Connect Battleground. I've been working with Mark Hood up at Vanderburg, Donsen, and Gendara as to how to put together a lease in exchange for some of the services that Connect Battleground has provided to us. So, I am looking towards finalizing a draft, if that makes sense, with Connect Battleground and bringing that to the board at the next meeting. And I believe that is all I have. Any more questions for us? Me?
I have a question on the head count.
Yes.
With Yakal being almost 800 kids, and of course, we're adding capacity with the tenplexes. Amboy is only at 578. So, I know you do, every year, you kind of roll them up, right? So, what are we doing? Is there room to put tenplexes on Amboy's campus anticipating those kids going to, you know, to Amboy?
I would, without doing further investigation, we typically on all the campuses have looked at adding a tenplex in the future. At this point, I have not heard of any capacity issues at Amboy. So, that's something that we'll continue to monitor. The class sizes are pretty good up there and we haven't had any pushback as far as needing more space yet.
So, is that school built for 600?
I would, I'm going to have to defer until I come to the capital facilities plan. I should have all those...
No, no, no. It's just, I know that you think that way of rolling them up. And it's just, this one sounds like it's sounding some alarms just because there is such a discrepancy.
Right.
Isn't part of that discrepancy because of the head start and the fact that we have more classes than kindergarten?
No. With full day kindergarten, you know, that would continue up. But as far as head start and the preschool, those numbers are not included in any of these numbers.
That's the only one that jumped out when you compared them to me.
Yeah. We'll monitor that indefinitely, but I have not heard of any capacity issues up there at this point.
Looks like we're the highest FTE since 2010-11.
Remember, though, when you're looking at your FTE, that we just started full day kindergarten. So, it's probably better to look at head count in comparison.
And the item with Connect Battleground is tied to the grant, I understand?
Well, Connect Battleground is providing some grant services. But they provide the youth mental health, first aid. They provide some ACES training. They provide some mentoring training and working with volunteers and putting them and mentors together. They have the ICANN training. So, a lot of the services that they are helping coordinate and provide all kind of tie in with our PDIS theme and our Ware Grant and our concerns with youth mental health.
Dignite, can I now?
And I should add, it's because that those services, if you reconnect Battleground's mission statement, it's to support the youth in our area in a Battleground School District. And it's because of that nonprofit status and the fact that their whole mission is to help support youth within the Battleground School District that working with the attorney allows us to rent a facility and extract more services.
And lots of capacity over there too, isn't there?
There is. We still will have a need to have someplace for some additional storage because when we do get new furniture shipments...
Oh, they're moving over there.
We can't handle a couple semis of furniture at the warehouse. We don't have the capacity. And there's times when we need places for furniture or other items to sit in transit to either, as they're headed to surplus or to other buildings. So, Curtis and I are going to arm wrestle over what that space would look like and the capacity that we would be able to provide.
Any other questions for Miss Lane? Thank you. Item on the agenda is our Teaching Learning Update. Mr. Ross?
Thank you. Well, kind of a strange topic for Teaching Learning, but I want to talk a little bit about snow. As you know, the snow and the ice and all of that has caused havoc with our sports schedules, but it has also caused havoc for teachers in the classroom. And they're doing a, they're doing a great job adjusting lesson plans and changing assessments. And we did have a request from some semester teachers, teachers who teach just semester-long classes at the high school and at the middle school, if we could move the end of the semester up a week to give them the makeup for some of the added days. Initially, I thought that would not be a problem. I thought, "Well, okay, well, you know, we'll move the end of the semester." But lo and behold, I was surprised at how much that does affect. We have some professional development planned. We would move, we would have to move into February. So, we'd move into that following Thursday and Friday and make those half-days. And by doing that, we would disrupt some professional development that we've had planned since June. We have a trainer coming in from the East Coast on that day. It would kind of disrupt that. It would disrupt some other professional development that we have planned. Most importantly, when I talked to Lynda Gellings, because teaching and learning, we not only looked at what it would affect from our side of the house, but also, you know, the resources and financially. We found that we do have a large number of running start students who we would have to count differently because we would go into February with that count. And actually, we, there's the potential that we would lose some money through that FTE account. And so, that would kind of cost us money for doing that in addition to changing the professional development and kind of disrupting the calendar and having to change those current full days in February to half-days. So, we gave a lot of thought, but we decided there really was a little bit more involved than we thought. And we decided to maintain the current end of the semester date for January. And we know, again, we know our teachers are doing a great job. We have kindergarten testing coming up, so they can do their elementary report card. And, you know, that really puts them in a bind and a crunch. So, we appreciate that. But at this point, we have decided to leave the semester date where it is.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Are there any questions, more? Great update.
Is it still the bus service, service that actually makes that call? Where they go around and check the roads? Or they make a recommendation?
So, yeah, about 3:00 in the morning, Teresa Taylor and Rita Sanders are up. And we're getting reports from the drivers who are out driving the roads. And about 4:00, they let me stay for an extra hour. Then the three of us converse and make a decision based on the information we're getting from the drivers.
From the drivers, right. Okay. That makes sense. Is it still a person that, from the bus service, that actually drives or engages? Is it still a person that, from the bus service that actually drives or engages?
These slides off the road, no, she stays on.
We drive near here, sorry. Those plates, sure. I just remembered, not running it, same. That was an L. Yeah. It was like three in the morning, yeah.
What do we do when North County has less full days than South County? They have to make it up, okay.
Is there, is there a number of days that the state will afford to go if we have a determined?
That's a hard, that's a difficult answer because it really, you know, they say Seattle rules the state and if, if there are a lot of days statewide that have been canceled, then the state will make that proposal sometime in the spring to districts whether or not they want to apply for a wave. So we really never know if the states can decide, okay, statewide, we've had enough of this snow and you basically have to make it those, those dates. The one concern is obviously the end of the year, we would have to make up the, you know, any of the snow days unless we, the state offers a waiver. We will not attempt to change the graduation dates of our seniors. I know that, that's maybe a concern. You may get some questions about that, but that, we could, we would be very reluctant to change those dates that have been planned. Grandma Grandpa are coming from, you know, Midwest and they've had that planned since last year. There is, there is a requirement that our seniors, you know, by law are not supposed to go to be released any more than five days earlier than the rest of the district. So there is a potential that we could have to figure out what to do with our seniors after graduation, that we may have to create some activities or take up diplomas or, or something, but we're still hoping that doesn't happen. Keep in touch.
Good question. Is there any more? Thank you.
Give Ms. Sanders time to warm up the projector. Now she is on. And I wonder if, before she gets going, if we should make mention that today is her birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Rita. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Communications report, and I've invited, I'm on the emergency preparedness committee, which we launched this year, and so I've invited my committee, fellow committee members here. We're going to present the, talk about the revision of the emergency operations plan, which has been a major project for us, and it's on the consent agenda tonight. So we have Mike Kessler, our security supervisor, and Linda Gellings, our director of risk management. And Linda's gonna, Mike's gonna start us off.
First of all, it's kind of exciting to work with the, the group. We've got a couple other committees I'm involved with, with Linda and working with Rita all the time, so it's, it's nice to have them on board on the team. First of all, just a kind of a quick overview, we're all feeling, as, as the slide says right here, you know, feeling safe is fundamental for a positive learning environment. What we've done is we've gone to OSP, OSPI and also FEMA and we've kind of generated our emergency operation revision over that. So what we're gonna cover is a few different things, is your, your security and safety budget, number one, a timeline of advancements, emergency operation plan itself, revision process considerations, and also our drills and trainings that we are required to do.
Okay, so I just put down the budget to this current year and give you some bullet points there about what the money gets spent on. And most of this area is under Mike. He's the security supervisor and he's over the security staff at the buildings along with the principals. He works with all the cameras, the alarm monitoring, he oversees the crossing guards and the system that, that district-wide exact vision camera is also a system that Mike works with. And currently, if you look at your latest little flyer coming out from the lobby, of course, it says that this is one of the areas that the lobby goes towards, is towards the security. So we move on to the next slide. We just put a little timeline together. We've done this in the past for the board to kind of show some of the steps. The first safety plan requirement came out in 2002 and then we implemented threat assessments and then some upgrades were made at the state level again in 2008. The last upgrade, it's not on here, but the state updated some of the requirements in 2013. And we've done the camera updates and we originally got the cameras with the QSCAP money. It was part of the Obama fund during the recession and radio enhancements. And now, like we said, we're bringing the update for the emergency operations plan to you tonight.
So I'm gonna talk about, a little bit about the plan itself and the revision process. So what we wanted to do is we have a district-wide plan in place, but things have changed since the last time it was updated. There are some new guidelines recommended by OSPI and also the federal, the federal emergency management, FEMA. I don't know what that agency, thank you. So we wanted to make sure our plan is in alignment with those plans, that they recommend specifically for schools and school districts. So we, what we've done is we have a district-wide plan and then in it, there's a template for school-specific or building plans, so they can have the, a copy of the district-wide plan and then they can have their school-specific maps and other documents that they need that are related directly to them in the, in the, within the plan. We're, we use this plan, it's an integral part of our drills. We want to make sure that everything's in alignment, everything that we do goes back to this plan. It's gonna be continually updated and, and we also have made it now that, so that it's accessible online. So buildings will still have hard copies in their buildings for if we ever don't have a power outage or don't have internet available, but you can look at it because of the way we are a Google district and the way we can access our documents, people will be able to access it on their phones, on an iPad, on, and on, from their computer. And then we have resources within it that are hyperlinked to other resources available from national centers or from state, um, safety centers like, so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can just point to those and not have everything within the plan itself. At the core of the plan is the emergency handbook, which is in every classroom in our district. And this is the quick version of what to do in emergency. This is the quick step-by-step so that teachers can grab this and go when they have to evacuate the building or if they have a situation where they need to respond quickly. You don't want to go through a hundred-page emergency operations plan, you can use the emergency handbook. And this is at its, its core, so everything is aligned in our plan. So we wanted to make all that happen. So we went about revising the plan. The first thing we did was we created an emergency preparedness committee and that includes the three of us in addition to Teresa Taylor, our director of student services. She, because she oversees transportation in areas that are very critical in our plan. We also worked with other people within our district who also have significant, like our nursing coordinator, director of social and emotional learning, that have parts in our plan. We also worked with a consultant from 360 Safety Solutions. He has worked for the fire department, he has, for his entire career, and this is sort of his second career for him, and he consulted with us on this plan. Again, we followed the guidelines set by OSPI and the Department of Ed, the Department of Education. They have a center called the Readiness and Emergency Management for Schools Center, and we wanted to make sure that we were following their guidelines. So our plan also reflects new and updated policies that we've, that we've changed and updated since the last time it was revised. And also the cool thing is that with these hyperlinks and it being online, we can just hyperlink directly to those policies on board docs. We don't have to have them actually in the plan and take up more paper space. We sought feedback and awareness from the first responders in our community. So we met with Mark and our consultant, met with our sheriff's office, we met with Mr. Chuck Atkins, we met with the police chief, Bob Richardson, we met with the heads of the fire department and shared our plan with them so that they could be aware because of course, when there, an emergency happens, they are gonna be the first people to respond and come help us. And then, so that is what, our revised plan is what is on your consent agenda for tonight. And I think I already went over some of these considerations. So the core is the emergency handbook. Our plan follows the National Incident Management System and the Incident Command System because that is what our first responders use in an emergency and we want to be able to, when they respond, and you want to have one person in charge of an incident, so we all follow that protocol, that framework, so that we know who's doing what. There's common terminology used, so you know who's responsible for what when an incident happens. It, it talks about, our trainings and drills are in there. Rapid responder was also another consideration. Do you, and I'm gonna let Mark, Mike talk about the last three.
I answered, I think I went late for dinner, but that's okay. Just gotta go for our, our threat assessments. We do meet with the staff team once a month, get together and learn new things that are going on around the area and also learning about other school districts and what they're experiencing with their threat assessments. Our security monitoring system, last year, we, we purchased a new platform, which in my view is, is more user-friendly and also gives a better quality video. We are replacing cameras as, as we can. This is the, in the school districts I've been around in the, in the past, I tell you, we, we have about 788 cameras district-wide and I, we doubled what Evergreen District has, so we're, we're kind of really overcovering a lot of stuff, which is, is good. We also, our newer buildings have access control, which are badges that, that I produce and, and give to people that are working in those buildings. So that way we can monitor who's, who's in and out if, if we have a situation we have to, we have to look at. Also rapid responder, it's kind of a, kind of a refreshed type system. It was going away, it actually went away, I think, for a couple days in the end of July and the governor signed some emergency funding to, to bring it back and they've made a few changes to it. But we're giving continuous training throughout the, the district with the head secretaries and administrators on, on how to keep the emergency contacts up to date to when we have drills or actual events, how to log them into the system. We have the first alert button where we have about, I think about eight of us get alerted every time that it's activated, that something's going on. Even when we're, we're putting the drills in, we gotta make sure that we put drill and if we don't, then we get a lot of people running, trying to figure out what's going on, so. Also, I just wanted to go over a little bit on the, the emergency drills and training that I had talked about earlier, which is important. These are required by the state of Washington under the engrossed Senate Bill 5620 requiring K through 12 schools and their safety drills. We're required to have at least one safety-related drill per month, per building. We're also required three fire evacuations per year, three lockdowns per year, one shelter in place per year, one mapping system, which is using rapid responder per year, and then also one high-risk, being an earthquake, tsunami, floods or any other high-risk type thing. We had a tornado here, not, not this year, but last year, that we enacted our ICS shelter in place at the time. Also on our training end of it, we're, we're making sure that at the ICS 100, which is the Incident Command Systems Introduction Training, we're making sure that all our campus security, our head secretaries and nurses and whoever else wants to be involved with the, the ICS goes through the, the training. We've had a pretty good working relationship with Cressa. They come out and, and give us a quick overview-type lesson and then we all get on the computer and, and take the mandatory test on, on it. Also, on top of our administrators having an ICS 100, they're also required to have the IS 700, which is the, the NIMS, the National Incident Management System. And all the, the principals and associate principals are required to have the 100 and 700. So those are things that we, we continue to build on. We're also, I'm working on trying to put together some more tabletop exercises for each school. And one of the things we're looking into is, is now that we're getting ready to really move forward on our revised incident operation plan, our emergency operation plan, is to have a quick training on how to use the emergency operation plan, what it does for you, where to look for certain things that, that apply to the, the incident that's taking place. And, and at that, at that point, then we're gonna put somebody in the hot seat and actually have a tabletop where we have to utilize the emergency operation plan. We tried it last year and I think that's where we came up with lessons learned, where we really needed to, to get in there and, and get the emergency operation plan revised. Our committee had tried to do it on our own and with, with all the other duties that we have, we felt that it was pretty important that we got somebody that could, could dedicate the time and it costs a little bit of money, but we got a good discount on it because, you know, we've used these people in our, in our drills in the past and then my boss over here was kind enough to approve it. But I think, I think you guys going over the plan are really gonna see some great things in it. Any questions?
How many of you have been on the board? You're along this.
I don't know if I have enough.
And you've been on the board for five? Never have we gotten a detailed presentation on this plan before. And you guys are amazing, what you've done compared to what we were before and what we are today. It's amazing. Thank you so much. Obviously, kids are our number one priority. This obviously is a major portion.
I have to say, and I think it's next week will be my 17th year year, the work that Mike has done for this district and the time he's been here has been incredible and the respect that he ha, that not only does he give to others, but I think that the administrators have for him is phenomenal. And he has, he along with the committee, has put in countless hours in getting this And he has, he along with the committee, has put in countless hours in getting this done, so I'm very proud of the work that they've done.
Thank you. Yeah, and we can see that there's a lot of effort that was put into it. I do have a couple of questions, as you asked. The access online, accessibility online, that's authenticated only on a command for not for public use.
Correct, yes. I control that, and we give permissions to the people that need to see it or some district, etc.
And actually, it was online for the board documents, and then Julie took it off because we are making that only, you'll be able to view it as board members through administrator access, but it's changed now, it's up tonight.
One thing to keep in mind, this is an ongoing process, too, and things change. And as things change, there's only going to be a few people that are going to be able to revise and correct, and two people, number one and number two. So the integrity of it is very important to us, too. We're not going to be running to another school district and letting them, you know, cut and paste from our report. I mean, we'd be more than happy to share some things with them, but, you know, I think this is a good plan, and took a lot of effort on the committee and our consultants' behalf. So question number two. Transportation evacuation training from buses, is that part of the plan? Well, go ahead.
We actually, Clark County Safe Schools Task Force has been for, I don't know, probably 20 years, and I've been a member on that since I started. Mike's actually the chairman of the group this year, and they developed a transportation plan, and that's been part of our, even our past one, and this current one. There's an appendix, I believe, for transportation in this section, and that's why we included Teresa Taylor on the plan and the committee.
Yeah, perfect. I didn't get a chance to read down the page.
Working on pages, you know.
Yeah.
The last one, I think, was in 200 pages, wasn't it, or was it?
I think it was about this year, a little longer. It's comprehensive.
Good. It's great to have a plan for dummies.
Yes.
And what was our district tabletop exercise, Mike?
How was it, or what?
What was it? What event was it that you put me on the hot seat on?
Yes.
Well, I really appreciate it, you did a great job. I think we, as I recall, was the tornado, and we involved, you know, pretty much the schools that were actually affected by it. I think what really caught our evaluator's attention was, who was sitting with you? Well, Mary Beth conveniently had some meeting up in Seattle or Olympia.
I was shopping at Clark County Council, so I'd taken the day off.
Well, I can't remember who was sitting with you to start with.
I suppose, wasn't it?
No, because that's the story I want to, yeah. Dave here.
Yeah.
You remember what you asked?
Boy, it's been a while.
Okay. Well, he was sitting in the back, kind of being one of the observers. I think he was sitting by Mr. Highway at the time. Well, we had, I can't remember who we were sitting with, but anyway, an important, you know, it was Danny.
Very important.
Yeah, very important.
Very important. I used to be the lead.
Hey, I need to thank Danny, anyway, he's the one who recruited me to this school district.
That's right, I want credit for that.
He actually had the opportunity to coach my kids on high school football.
That's right, see?
Thanks for raising my kids, Ray.
You're welcome.
Anyway.
Mike?
Okay, I'm sorry. David asked, you know, why was he needed here in the back here? Didn't understand why he had to be there. But it was important, because then he had to leave, and all of a sudden, we just threw David into the seat next to Mark, and basically, what he was doing is just keeping track of what was going on, keeping Mark on top of things as we were going through it. But anyway, it, lessons learned, we actually did a pretty good job for winging it, but I think right now, with the emergency operation plan we have in place, we won't have to wing it anymore.
Yeah, great. That's a good thing.
I have just one question. How many times have you had to put any piece of that in action this year? What kinds of incidents have you had?
You've got to remember that we're actually putting, we're actually putting Incident Command in everything we do every day. Any incident that takes place, being from a fight at the high school to, you know, maybe a leak in our district roof or something to that effect.
A gas leak.
A gas leak, yeah. We're always, yeah, we're always, you know, putting Incident Command into place, you know. Somebody's going to be in charge until they're, you know, relieved by somebody with more experience at whatever we're dealing with.
I had particularly thought of the gas situation. Knew that was a pretty big one.
The one at daybreak? Yes.
Is that the biggest one this year? The one that involved the most students?
You had, we had Prairie, Prairie High School, the smoke.
Yeah, there was a smoke, we had, when we were at, well, so. Gas smell at daybreak, and then we had smoke smell at burning, smell at Prairie also.
Yeah, what we try to do is, we try to have a debriefing afterwards. The one at Prairie, Teresa Taylor and myself happened to be there. I went there after Mary Beth had kind of advised me of what was going on, but we try to do a debriefing and lessons learned after every event, because it helps so much. It happened to be a rainy day at the time. We had a couple of office staff that felt that they didn't have to evacuate the building. So we kind of had a debrief there and told them it was important that we had everybody safe and out of the building until we had the fire department assess the event and given us the okay that we can, are the all-clears that we can go back in. Any other questions on the plan? Perfect, thank you. Rita, do you have anything else?
I do, I know I've had my fair share of time here already, but I'd like to briefly update you on communications around the levy.
Good to hear.
Okay. So I gave you each an exam, a mailer that is being mailed to everyone. It is on Friday, it was sent out on Friday, so it should be arriving in mailboxes today or tomorrow. We also have information on our website, we've had information in our newsletters, we've had some articles in the paper, both papers reflect around the Columbia. We are also having three information nights that we have scheduled. So one, the first one is January 17th at Chief at 6:00 p.m. Then we have another one, January 24th at 6:00 p.m. at Lauren, and then we have another one, January 31st at 6:00 p.m. at Yakal Primary. We also, what was the other thing I was going to?
Frequently ask questions, you're updating that right now.
Yes, we're adding more information to the website, we'll be putting posts out on social media as well, to get the information out there. Any questions about that?
No. Those levy nights that Ms. Anderson talks about is on our upcoming board events, and it's been, as we heard in citizens' comments the last couple of times, that board members should be present at those, so that we can have open discussion with the public, if we want to attend, so. Any questions?
I know Mark did a presentation to the chamber last week, which was very good. Have we had other presentations?
No, we have the three information nights and then the chamber, and that was the thing I forgot.
But you were there.
I was there.
Any other questions for Ms. Anderson? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is our committee reports. Before we get on to the committee reports, this is the time of year that I would appoint the committee positions, the standing committee positions. Our legislative committee is an board-elected position, so that won't be up for some time. We have our audit committee, and we have one position that's up this time of year, and I believe that that is Ms. Nichols' spot, and I would like to appoint her again for another year. And then our next committee is our FIT committee, and I've been currently on that, and I would like to see if Stephanie would want to take that spot. Currently, the FIT committee has been the, but there may be.
Is there a FIT committee still?
Yeah, there may be some things that come up recently, maybe even a, an interview with the LSW architects that submitted a, and things like that. And then we should, the FIT committee should meet at least twice a year to review the plan and make recommendations for the board.
I accept.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then the next committee would be our Human Resource Committee member, and that's currently held by Stephanie, and I.
Which has been inactive.
Which has been inactive.
But it'll probably be active again.
It's open for.
This spring?
It's open for conversation on how much involvement that will be. But I think I am going to be on that committee unless there's somebody else that wants to. And then we have our BGEF committee, and currently, that's with Mr. Root. That could be good if he stayed on that committee. Okay? And then our last committees, our three tier committees, and usually, we set those in September for the full school. So with that, I don't know if there's any current committee updates. I think we have a FIT committee update, and that's probably the only one for this. And maybe a legislative. That's my, sorry, my MEFDA committee went up. Thanks for keeping me on line. So you want to go on the audit committee?
Maybe. Me, myself, MEFDA on the 6th, again, for the monthly audit committee. And we went over the December Board of Directors and the Superintendent's budgets, and also pulled quite a number of vouchers, and did not see any discrepancies in any of the vouchers at all. And we were made aware of the, possibly, the 18th of having the exit with the auditors and forward to a good report.
Well, I think we found one item on that, as we went through the things that we questioned.
Yeah, there was quite a discussion on that.
Yeah, that was, one of, we really was.
You want to relate on that one?
Well, it had something to do with someone named Montgomery Anderson.
Montgomery Anderson.
I just wondered how much coffee he had drank that day.
Oh, man.
The only other thing that I'd like to mention, just keep in mind, is that we talked about the carpeting in KCA as being totally unfit, and would like, I'd like to recommend that we start looking into re-carpeting that building, if we're doing something about the carpeting. It's either that or we've got lots of money hidden under all these wells, because there's, you could just waste it, you go down, so, anyway, I don't think there's any money under it, but I'd sure like to look into possibly re-carpeting that building. That's my input.
Well, I think some of the discussion came up about the, we've had a couple of incidences where people have fallen, so, or the safety portion of it.
Then that actually came up because we had somebody else fall last week.
The insurance companies have said, this doesn't, this doesn't go, we need to do something. So really, it's something that, I don't know how we'd go about that, but I'm, my own personal recommendation is that we really get something going before someone really gets, well, Barb was pretty badly hurt one time, and we don't feel bad to get, it would probably be me.
Anything else from the FIT committee? Thank you. Maybe I'm thinking about my New Year's resolution. Well, let's go with the BGEF committee.
I have a lot of updates, actually. First of all, Colleen O'Neill is superwoman, there is no doubt about it. Katie's a close second, but, Colleen O'Neill is amazing. Just as an example, she's involved with the Fred Meyer Community Awards, she's involved with LCC, the Greater, Hope is Greater Than Despair campaign, the Chamber Luncheons that she attends at Kiwanis, Read Across America, School Days 2017, and the list goes on. I mean, it is amazing, a single person is this involved and this committed to doing what she's doing. So she is absolutely superwoman. Cannot be more proud to be on the committee and be involved with this, with the people that are involved with this, too. That's my update.
Thank you.
Okay, now, legislative.
Maybe this has got the schedule, so I'll let her go.
Oh, we didn't bring it all with, in terms of things, the educational task force that was put into effect last year to study school funding, the ET, EDG, Educational Funding Task Force, is supposed to report back to the legislature with a bipartisan plan for funding. These two documents that I printed out, one is from the Republicans and the other's from the Democrats, they're about as far apart as you can get. There was another hearing today, which I didn't, did you have, you didn't take a listen to it? I'll go online and listen to it. I did attend the town hall with Ann Rivers last Saturday, and of course, her statement, what it was worth, was that the Republicans looked at all 295 districts, whereas the Democrats looked at the Seattle or the North Puget Sound-type districts, and that's one of the reasons they were that far apart. What that all says to me is that I don't have much hope for what's going to happen. We do have appointments with most of our legislators from this area for the February 13th Day on the Hill. Ann Rivers, Vicki Kraft, Liz Pike, Wiley.
Sharon Wiley, Brandon.
Brandon, Vic, Paul Harris. We have those set up, and I'll be there, you'll be there, and we're hoping maybe there'll be someone else from the district office who could attend. And anyone who is interested is welcome to come. Legislative Assembly is on Sunday afternoon, when a lot of legislators do come in, and there's time then for just one-on-one conversations, and then on Monday, the visitations out there in their offices with other school board members from this area. It's not just Bubba, it's all school districts of the state descend upon the hill to try to do something. And I'll repeat what I've said many times, the legislators say they don't hear from school boards and administrators and that sort of thing enough. They need to hear from us more, so that's my report.
I'll be there Sunday. I just registered, I'm not sure how to. Be there Sunday.
Stephanie, did you talk to Paul Harris?
I talked to him before our last board meeting.
Did anything else that happened?
I haven't talked to anybody since.
I did not go to the state committee meeting over the weekend because I was too chicken to drive home on Saturday.
Good. Not that important.
Any other committee reports that I may have missed? Any other committee reports that I may have missed? Thank you. And I believe I did already mention, if you could fill it out on the spreadsheet, the levies, I think that we should consider them also for the board members.
Julie, I'll leave that on sheets. It won't show on here.
No, that's just my issue.
Yes, why don't you make a comment?
I have first two. All emails will leave.
Thank you. And then the next item on the agenda, we'll turn over to-
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Montgomery has a tour. I have a couple of things that I'd like to do during the next couple of minutes. One is to acknowledge that we were at WASTA in Spokane a couple of months ago, and our board was awarded a Board of Distinction by the Washington State School Directors Association. And while we were there, a couple of our board members also got some additional recognition for some attendance at some particular classes that they went to. So Ken Root went to Advanced Leadership and got 15 credits of professional development.
Oh, thanks.
And Jim Peguero attended a session called Fund It, Build It, and got 14 credits of professional development.
Nice job.
The second thing I'd like to do is, I need to read a proclamation from our esteemed governor. This is School Board Recognition Month. And so, I'm going to read this just as he has written it. It says, "Proclamation: Whereas the mission of the Washington Public School System is to assure that all students receive high levels and possess the knowledge and skills to be responsible students and enjoy productive and satisfying lives. And whereas Washington's 295 locally elected school boards and nine elected educational service district boards are the core of the public education governance system in our state, and whereas the districts and regions they lead serve more than 1 billion students, have a combined annual budget of more than $11 billion and employ 160,000 people, and whereas school directors play a crucial role in promoting student learning and achievement by creating a vision, establishing policies and budgets, and setting clear standards of accountability for all involved, and whereas school directors are directly accountable to the citizens in their districts and regions, serving as a vital link between members of the community and their schools, and whereas school directors and educational service districts provide a passionate voice of advocacy for public schools and the welfare of schoolchildren, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize school directors as outstanding volunteers and champions for public education. Now therefore, I, J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim January 2017 as School Board Recognition Month. In Washington, and I urge all people in our state to join me in this special observance, signed this 21st day of December 2016, Governor J. Inslee. I just want to go on record as saying it's been my privilege to work with this group of people for three years. They are focused, they are laser-like in their vision and their passion and what they want for our students. Any meeting we go to, you can see what they do for our students, and I am absolutely humbled to have the opportunity to work with you. I have some certificates for you. Julie has done such a nice job of bringing these up. So I'll give them to you, Mavis. Thank you so much. Mr. Anderson, sir. Stephanie Glentuck, thank you. Mr. Root.
Thank you.
And Mr. Peguero. Do you want to do a picture of them?
Yes.
Standing with their certificates.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
I can speak on behalf of most of the board members, if not all of them, that it's incumbent to accept a certificate of recognition such as this. I don't think that we as board members many times think that we make the difference. We want to try to do what that is best for kids and the citizens in the district. But we don't think of ourselves as the leaders of a large organization such as this. And it's through the teamwork of all the teachers and administrators that make this great district move forward. So, I don't know if any of the other board members have any, yeah? That's my opinion.
Well said.
Yes, well said.
So, our next item on the agenda is our citizens' comments.
Just for the record, my name is Richard Rylander and I am a resident of the Battleground School District. I have two items this evening. One, I just handed you as a repeat of something you received twice before, back in July, and then again in November, I came before this board and asked you to implement, create and implement a policy regarding a requirement for the board to respond as school districts and as OSPI does within a defined period of time to any inquiries or requests for information. This board has not taken any action. So we've gone six months now, and I will come back once a month and continue asking for the board to implement and create such a policy. Second, I would like to make some comments relative to the documentation that is on the district website and apparently in the mailer which has been sent out relative to the levy. In your documents, you note that the levy dollars make up the difference between what the state provides for K development education and what it costs per schools. The district's current maintenance and operations levy expired December 31st, 2017. You go on to note that the replacement levy is not a new tax or a tax increase, it will maintain the current tax rate. That information is false and incorrect. Indeed, is my understanding that there was a meeting this morning between some of the members of this group and the county assessor to discuss this topic. Any increase at all from the previous budget is a tax increase. You have requested in this proposal $136.5 million. Previous four years was $103.3 million. Simple math indicates that that's in excess of a $33 million increase. You've also indicated that it's your belief that the millage rate, the cost per thousand, will remain essentially equivalent, assuming that the property values increase at a rate that's consistent with the increases that you're looking for in your proposed levy. If that isn't correct, then that millage rate would be in itself incorrect, that statement would be incorrect as well. So, my understanding from the discussion this morning at the county assessor's office was that there would be some alteration moving forward, a certain language, particularly relative to tax increase. If that is the case, then the question I would pose to this group is, what will you do about past communications? Where you cited that there was no tax increase, what will you do about the documentation? Will there be any sort of correction that is issued? And I believe that comes in 2 minutes and 50 seconds. Thank you.
The meeting that you're talking about, if it's what I think it is, did not take place in the assessor's office. There was a meeting this morning with Mary Beth Lynn, Rita Sanders, myself, and our county assessor. Is that the meeting to which you're referring?
That is correct.
That was in my office, that was not at the county assessor's office.
I understand correctly.
And the essence of the conversation was the verbiage that's being used regarding the levy. The fact is that we are talking about a static tax rate of $3.66 per thousand. That's a different conversation than what the board had when you were here for that meeting, when we made the decision, when they made the decision what the levy was going to be. The amount of money that we're collecting or hoping to collect over the next several years is indeed more money than we're currently collecting. That was discussed in a public meeting in this room, and the board decided on which proposal. They had five choices, and they made a decision. And indeed, the information that's in the pamphlet and the information that you'll see on our website reflects the fact that we'll be collecting more money over the next several years. So there is no misconception. I think what has been missing and what the assessor wants clarified is for us to be more clear in the fact that we are asking to collect more money. That the tax rate is, has not been deceitful, that the tax rate of $3.66 is what we're collecting this year, is what the board is looking to collect in the foreseeable future. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Except, if I may. The brochure, the materials that are posted in the brochure on the county, on the district website state that this is no, this is not a tax increase. That is incorrect. That verbiage needs to be corrected. The assumption on the millage rate is an assumption, and it best has to be an estimate, does it not?
Correct.
Okay, but it's not stated as an estimate. The language again, I'll give you an example. The increase in the proposed budget for the 2018 period when compared to 2017 is approximately a 16% increase. All right? So from 17 to 18, unless property values within the district increased at a roughly equivalent rate, 16% increase in valuation, then what happens to the millage rate, sir? The millage rate goes up because you had a 16% increase from one to the other, which would not then approximate to $3.66. So I'm suggesting that the information as it's currently stated and related, and that which has been shared in news reports and interviews, is substantially incorrect and misleading. That's my opinion.
Yes. And I agree that I would revise the way we were talking about the levy to include the fact that we were in fact looking at increased revenue, that the tax rate is projected to be static. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, can I make a comment here? Yes, Mr. Anderson.
There was a correction this morning in the Congress. I can't quote it word for word, but relating to this, you might want to look at that.
I have a seat.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to talk about two different things that all go fast, so I don't use more of my time. I was in attendance at the Education Task Force hearing. I talked Linda's ear off this morning about this. All of the documents are online, and if you want the website, I can send it to you. It was one of the most frustrating meetings I've been in. They were charged, this task force, in coming up with recommendations, what they needed to have done, and the cost. The Democrats talked for, and I'm independent, so they talked for an hour, page by page by page, everything that we need to fully fund education and the price tag. It was so clear and so concise, and I was thrilled listening to it. I thought, finally, they are understanding what teachers and students and parents and school boards and administrators have been talking about for years. So they got done, they went back to the front. Ann Rivers, who I was at an edu, or we had a legislative forum in Ann Rivers and Monica Stonier, Vicki Kraft, and I met Cleveland King. At that meeting, Ann told me, "Linda, we got it covered, we got it covered, we're all done." They got, after the Democrats were done, going through page by page of every single thing that we have asked for and the cost, which was $7.3 billion over four years. That's their total cost. Ann Rivers thanked them for all their time and their energy and whatnot, she said, "But we went at it a little differently. We looked at guiding principles." So she said, "We don't really have any figures or any plan, but we are looking at guiding principles because our philosophy is measure twice, cut once." And we didn't have all the data that we needed. So Pat Sullivan, who had been the one to go through the whole plan, said, "I have to say, I'm a little frustrated because we have seven months to work on this, and we were asked to come with recommendations and cost." And she said, "Well, again, I'll tell you, our philosophy is measure twice, cut once." So we went with guiding principles. Another woman, her name is Christine Office, said, "Can I ask you what data you were missing?" Well, yes, we were dating, we were missing the data. We got it today, though, we got it today. We were missing the data on what it costs to fund an urban school versus a rural school. And in my mind, I'm thinking, "That's odd, you can get that from OSPI." They were so frustrated. Then today, I listened to the, I wanted to go up there today, but I had all these meetings, but of course they were canceled because of the weather. The report came back that they met again, this was the second meeting, and there was no conclusion, and there was no understanding, and it was foreto form. The Republicans did not have a budget or recommendations. Obviously, they denied everything that the Democrats had put forward. Okay? I'm livid. I'm livid. Okay, my second, do you have a question?
Well, not just a comment, I think your time is up, so-
Okay, but I, okay, I'm going to go back to my seat and come back.
So you can take a second or a quarter.
Okay. The second thing I wanted to talk about-
We can do it on the second citizen.
No, but somebody could give me their time.
Well-
Okay. So the second thing I wanted to bring up is on the levy. And in November at the council meeting, we had Sue Crank come and visit with us, and we talked about what can BGEA do. We decided to do a letter writing campaign. And what happened is it started to morph into other groups. So now, now, we've got BGEA, we've got Building Admin, we've asked PSE to join in. There's a letter written, every teacher that is, because it has to be voluntary, in the building will sign the letter, the Building Admin will sign the letter. We will have fold, stuff, and address parties, and they will go out hand addressed to every single family in Battleground. And that is a joint effort, and we are very excited about it. And you should be too.
Thank you very much. Sponsor that you can look at it and bring it to the board at a said board meeting. If nobody sponsors, I'm going to presume that the policies are okay as they stand. Our next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes from December 12th, special meeting, the approval of the minutes from our December 12th regular meeting, our business and operation reports, our contract ratification, our personnel reports, our salary rate for community head referees and general facilitators to the workers, our student travel requests, our parental reports, the approval of donations for the BGEA Drama Club, for the Edinburgh trip that we heard about, and then the approval of the Battleground Public Schools Emergency Operations Plan.
meeting, the approval of the minutes from our December 12 regular meeting, our business and operation reports, our contract write-up, our personnel reports, our salary rate to community head referees and general facilitators to the workers, our student travel request, our financial reports, the approval of donations for the BGEA Drama Club for the Edinburgh trip that we heard about, and then the approval of the Battleground Public Schools Emergency Operations Plan that we also heard about. I move for approval of the consent agenda. So we have a motion on the floor on the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? No questions, but any comments? For many of you, one of the items that is on the consent agenda is under our personnel reports. And under our personnel reports, we have a notice of retirement for Mr. Mark Otteway, our superintendent. And I received a letter from him on Thursday mentioning, and I had to give that letter to HR, so I'm happy to read it. But I received a letter from him on Thursday mentioning that he had thought about it through the holiday time, and now was a good time for him to retire. Of course, it took me a while, surprising, was quite a shock, but per protocol, we had to put it on the agenda and it could be approved by the board. I would like to thank Mr. Otteway for taking us through the journey that we have in the last three years, withdrawing as a district and as a team and as a board. And it seems little to just say thank you for your time, but that's what we want to do. And for the board, I think that we need to look at this time as not a time of party, but as a time for how can we grow and how can we move? How can we take the steps that Mr. Otteway has helped us take and continue bringing this district to greater levels in the future? So, I don't know, is there any other comments? What if we say no?
We do not accept?
Yeah. Redacted. So to answer your question, if we do say no, he currently does have three years left on his contract that he's going to have to legally fulfill.
Marty, you said it well. I think we all feel the same way. Thank you, Marty. It's been a great learning experience. You taught us a lot.
I would also like to say thank you to Mark. And along with that is, he's brought us such a long ways with this socially-emotional. Battleground, I think, is in the front-running of this. And the, on the E-flippings that WAZDA puts out, there's our kids, our future, which are highlighting excellence in Washington State. Battleground Superintendent was honored as state champion for children as, that was the number eight read article in 2016. So this shows us what we had in Mark Otteway in bringing this district forward. I want to thank you.
I'll say thank you, and we wouldn't be where we are and have made the strides that we've made in three years without you here as our fearless leader. So, thank you.
I think you know that we had some pretty tough times prior to you coming on board. You've really, you've really helped us through those tough times, and made me a better person. I know it's made most everybody a better person, but. Most everybody? There's a couple. But thank you.
Maybe these last three years have seemed like the full time that you've been committed because it's, I think there was, it was challenging last three years, so thank you for taking us on what we did three years ago.
Thank you. So we currently have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda that has presented. Is there any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, tie to zero. Business to take. Then we're down to our last citizens' comments. Is there anybody at this time that would like to address the board? No, we won't sign that. Okay. Being we're at this time as well, we have a very esteemed board member that, who also has a birthday. He was letting us know earlier so that we would not forget him when we're saying happy birthday to him. With that, we'd like to say a happy birthday to Mr. Root, and Mr. Otteway did such a good job in starting the birthday song, remembering what happened to help us.
Ready?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Ken. Happy birthday to you.
Good.
Boy.
That's a big singing.
Capricorn's rule.
I think you got the wrong beat.
Our next item on the agenda, we have a few papers to sign, but our next item on our agenda is an executive session for personnel under RCW 4230-1, ten lower printed, with possible action. That exec session will take approximately 20 minutes, so we should be back by five minutes Personnel, and we had discussed the qualifications for a superintendent.
With that, I move to appoint Mark Ross as Battleground Public Schools Superintendent, working with Mark Otteway as of today for a smooth transition with a contract starting 7/1/17. Mark Ross has been working with Mr. Otteway for the last couple of years in preparation for a superintendent role due to the fact that Mark, Mr. Otteway, had committed to working with Battleground Public Schools for three to four years.
So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any other comments?
I think what interests me about Mr. Ross is that he is fully committed to seeing our group, I guess, to grow and continue on the path that Mr. Otteway has set for.
I mimic the same thing. It's well deserved, and you certainly are, unfortunately, a mole of this guy, so maybe we can fix that.
I can't, I can't do that.
Jim, you got it.
I also want to say the same thing, and appreciate what you've done so far and look forward to you hearing on what the board has set forward.
And I just want to say that we are happy with the path that we're on, and we know you're a part of that, so we look forward to your leadership in continuing down that path and bringing your own little piece to our wonderful big puzzle here.
Yeah, and for myself, as Clintak had stated in the motion, if I recall correctly, we knew that Mr. Otteway, when we had offered him the position, he had told us that he would be with us for three to four years, and we had been working towards a replacement with inside of our own system. And we look forward to some more great things happening in the district. So with that, we currently have a motion on the floor. Does everybody understand the motion? Yes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, tie to zero. Congratulations.
I'm very humbled and honored to be following in some pretty big footsteps, but I feel confident with working with Mark and a smooth transition, and with the rest of a great group of people that I work with and with the school board that we continue the really good things and the good work that we're doing in the Battleground School District. I'm very excited, very excited. It's a great district, and very excited to be a part of that and move things forward and work with Mark to make that happen. So thank you, thank you very much.
You can move your furniture in tomorrow. We painted the office.
We painted the office. We needed the office.
Thank you all for staying and waiting to see what the action may have been. And at this time, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.